Now for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kristen Resch. If you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Piker?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
Councilmember Simpson?
Here.
We have the minutes of the November 2nd, 2020, City Council meeting. Any changes or corrections? Seeing none, they will stand approved as presented. Ms. Miller, you did a great job of running that meeting in my absence. Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome, sir.
Next, we have a proclamation for the 150th anniversary of the plating and naming of Arvada, which I am privileged to be able to present tonight. And we have Karen Miller from the Historical Society who's going to join us for that. Ms. Miller, are you there?
I am here.
Good to see you, or to see your pet.
Yeah, I was here and then he took over.
Whereas we acknowledge that our community has developed within what is now called the Clear Creek and Ralston Valleys, which are the ancestral lands of the Cheyenne, Ute, and Sioux peoples, past and present. And whereas Benjamin Franklin Wadsworth and Louis Reno created a town plat on their properties, which were adjacent to the newly completed Colorado Central Railroad that connected Denver and Golden. And whereas Mary Ann Wadsworth, Benjamin's wife, named the new town Arvada after her brother-in-law, Hiram Arvada Haskins. And whereas the formal notice of the new town, population 100, was filed with Jefferson County on December 1st, 1870. And whereas, Arvadans take pride in our history and the foresight of our community to continually plan for the future. And whereas, the decision to plat name Arvada supporting, supported the opening of a post office, the growth of schools, the building of additional infrastructure, and the formation of social and faith-based organizations that have collectively provided a foundation for the civil, economic, and cultural advancement that has followed. And whereas, we express gratitude for ongoing efforts to document and preserve Arvada's history for everyone in our community. And whereas, December 1st, 2020 marks the 150th anniversary of the plating and naming of the city of Arvada, Colorado. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the city of Arvada, Colorado, that December 1, 2020 be designated as Arvada Naming Day in recognition of the vision, hard work, and dedication of our founding community members dated the 16th day of November, 2020, signed by all members of city council. Congratulations, Karen.
Thank you.
Would you like to say something?
I would just say it's my pleasure to accept this. Unfortunately, our president, Renee Nelson, is not available tonight. So I'm subbing for her, but the Historical Society is very happy to participate. And we're pretty excited about the upcoming Arvada report with the two-page spread on the 1870 plat.
And that's exciting stuff, exciting history, and we continue to build on it. Thank you for what you and Historical Society do, and we'll make sure we get this proclamation to you all.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no presentations tonight. Is there anyone that wishes to make public comment?
There is not.
We do not have anybody signed up for public comment. Did we open the front door so that if anybody wanted to come in? Yes, we have. Okay, very good. And will you let us out that way tonight for those of us who parked in our traditional parking areas? Okay, under new business, we have two items on the consent agenda. The first is R 20-105, a resolution authorizing an agreement, my in between the city of Arvada and Murray Smith, Inc., for final design bidding and construction services for the Lake Arbor Bank improvements and dredging design in an amount not to exceed approximately $244,000. Second one's a resolution accepting a warranty deed from Hill Industries LLC for the acquisition of certain property along Ralston Road, generally at the intersection of West 58th Avenue, as part of the traffic signal rebuild Hill Petroleum Project Number 18TC01. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that consent agenda items R 20-105 and R 20-106 be approved.
Very good. Ms. Miller, how do you vote? Ms. Miller's voted yes. All other council members have voted yes as well. The consent agenda is approved unanimously. Next, we have a resolution 20-107, a resolution authorizing an eighth extension on the effective date of the city manager's declaration of emergency relating to the novel coronavirus COVID-19 and the associated public health crisis. Rachel Morris, do you want to lead the discussion on this?
Thank you, Your Honor. Following review of the current public health crisis, the city manager is requesting council approval to extend the emergency declaration from its current expiration date of November 30, 2020 through January 31, 2021. This request would extend the emergency declaration and provide the city manager with the flexibility to continue to address a rapidly changing situation on a local level. Since the last requested extension was approved on September 21, 2020, cases of COVID-19 in Colorado have steadily risen to third wave of the pandemic. Currently in Colorado, case counts and new hospital admissions are increasing rapidly. This information demonstrates the ever-changing conditions associated with the ongoing public health crisis. This disruptive event requires quick decisions in order to focus on the safety and well-being of the community and city team members, delivery of core services, management of city resources, and general uncertainty associated with the recovery of Arvada businesses and institutions. Therefore, the city manager has requested this extension. The city manager has and will continue to record any use of the powers authorized under Section 26-38 of the Arvada City Code. City council will be regularly informed of all such action as soon as practical under the circumstances. The Arvada team recommends that the city council approve R 20-107, a resolution authorizing an eighth extension of the effective date of the city manager's declaration of emergency relating to the novel coronavirus COVID-19 and the associated public health crisis.
Okay, city council, questions or discussion? Ms. Simpson, you're first.
I'll make the motion if there are no questions.
Ms. Ford, did you have a question?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that R 20-107, a resolution authorizing an eighth extension of the effective date of the city manager's declaration of emergency relating to the novel coronavirus COVID-19 and the associated public health crisis be approved.
Motion is for approval, I'm going to speak briefly to the motion because we have to kill another 30 seconds, that, you know, I think that Mr. Devon's done an excellent job of keeping city council informed. I think the checks and balances are still in place so that if city council had any concerns about how he was exercising his authority, we would certainly raise them with them. We're not shy about doing that. And Mr. Devon is certainly going to be objective in listening to our concerns if we had any. So for that reason, I'll be supporting the motion. Ms. Miller, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rest of council has voted yes as well. That passes unanimously. We have one public hearing. It is now 6:15, so we were able to time this perfectly tonight. I'll open the public hearing on the conditional use application for the northeast corner of 86th and Indiana, generally located at the northeast corner of West 86th Parkway and Indiana Street. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I believe we have planning manager Rob Smetana that will be presenting this information and facilitating the council's discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, members of the mayor, members of council. The applicant is requesting a conditional use approval for a residential development within the mixed-use suburban zoning district. The site is currently vacant and contains approximately 8.75 acres. Access to the site is proposed from a full movement access on 86th Parkway and a ride-in, ride-out access off of Indiana. A concept plan for the project was submitted as part of the conditional use request, and the project is proposed to contain a mix of single-family and townhome dwelling units as well as 4,500 square foot commercial space. The planning commission, oh, I'm sorry, the site plan application, a site plan application will be required, assuming you approve the conditional use. And as part of the site plan, we will review in detail other elements such as parking, architecture, and landscape design. The planning commission recommended approval of the conditional use at their October 20th meeting on unanimous vote. We have received the signed posting, log, and mailing affidavit, and they are in order. The applicant is in attendance for a presentation and questions. And we also have John Moore and Jenny Wolfshlog here to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Very good. The posting, log, and mailing affidavit will be made part of the record. If we have the applicants, if you will state and affirm that the testimony you're about to proceed, to provide in these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. If you can answer to the affirmative.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, I do.
Very good. If you'll state your name for the record, your business address, and you can proceed with your presentation.
My name is Adam Goldberg, G-O-L-D-B-E-R-G. I'm the principal of the Gold Block Ventures Company. Our mailing address is 4,600 South Syracuse Street, Suite Number 900 in Denver, Colorado, 80237.
Very good. Proceed with your presentation if you would.
Thank you so much. I, first and foremost, before we get into the presentation, want to thank city council, planning commission, and staff for countless hours of meetings and feedback that they have accommodated at our request. And we respectfully submit this presentation to you, paying mind to the feedback that we've heard from you guys as leaders of your community and individual community members. So thank you for this opportunity, and without further ado, we'd like to get in. So if we could go into the next slide, Bruce, that would be great. It's just a brief agenda. We're going to start off with introductions. I have invited some of our design team here. So they will be introduced. I'm going to do a brief overview of the project, although city council is very, very familiar with this project. Over the last few years, we've been working on it. And then after a brief overview, I'm going to dive right into the item-by-item conditional use approval criteria and then open it up for questions thereafter. Next slide, please. Here's the group that's been working on this project. Jonathan Moore has been our ultra-helpful planner at the city of Arvada. Curtis Rowe is our traffic engineer. Jeff Van Sambik is our architect. And Jeffrey Akagren is our civil engineer. All three of those design consultants are available on this Zoom if any design-related specific inquiries come up that I can't answer. Next slide, please. Here's a 30,000-foot aerial view of the site, which is at the northeast corner of Indiana and 86th Parkway. Next slide, please. Here's a closer aerial where you can see the improved Prestige preschool that is carved out from this site, and the balance of the site is what we're going to be talking about today. Next slide, please. Thank you. Yeah, no conversation about this site would be complete if we didn't mention topography. Most of you who are familiar with the site and drive by it on a daily or weekly basis know that it looks a lot like a ski hill at the moment, an undeveloped ski hill. There's about roughly 60 to 65 feet of fall, depending on the line that you cut, south to north along this site. There are some photos on the right-hand side of this slide and a topographical survey on the left-hand side of the slide. That was one of the challenges that we had to contend with to try to develop this site to its highest and best use. Next slide, please. In general, this is a, this is a mixed-use development plan. Per the latest land development code that has labeled this MXS for mixed-use suburban development, we believe that we're presenting a plan that is in line with all the guidelines from that zoning designation. If you'll notice on this site plan, at the hard corner or the southwest corner of the site in question, we have a 4,500-square-foot footprint that's contemplated to be two stories, so 9,000 square feet of commercial space, which is parked according to city standards in an adjacent surface lot. This, this site, every bit of this site is mixed-use in nature. As most of you guys know who talked to our team about this site early on, it was originally contemplated to be a all-residential site, and we have tweaked that plan, heard you loud and clear, preserved the hard corner for commercial use, and think it lays out very nicely in that fashion, especially in the third dimension that you can't see here topographically because the commercial pad is elevated behind the Five Parks Monument sign. And then the site does fall off to the south for our proposed residential use. What we have as far as residential is concerned is about six acres, which would have 72 dwelling units in it, 55 attached townhomes, and 17 detached single-family homes, which is 12 DU to the acre. Let's go to the next slide, please. We are going to spend the majority of this presentation talking about the residential. This is a request for conditional use to allow residential. However, we would be remiss if we didn't emphasize the point that the overall site is mixed-use in nature. So we, what we did was we put together this slide here that provides some, excuse me, some concept imagery of what the market could bear at that hard corner. Next slide, please. Now, as promised, we're diving into the residential. Next slide, please. So what, what are we proposing? We're proposing a high-quality, highly-designed, with quality construction and worksmanship, residential development. The market will dictate whether it is for sale or for rent. If it is for rent, it would be fully amenitized with its own clubhouse and pool and things of that nature. If it's for sale, some for-sale communities have that, some don't. It depends on what the market will bear, and it will also depend on the preference of the Five Parks HOA, on whether they would want us to come in and be a part of their HOA, in which case we wouldn't need as many amenities on our site, or if they'd like us to remain out of their HOA, in which case we would amenitize in and of ourselves. You'll see two- and three-story building facades. It's primarily two-story construction, but because of the topography that we discussed, there are walkout basement conditions or tuck-under garage conditions. So if it's the front of the building that's on the downhill side, it would be a tuck-under garage. If it is the back of the building on the downhill side, it would be a walkout, walkout basement. But all homes have their own private entrances, yards, and patios. All homes have the two-car garages except for four, where topography won't allow. But they do have, those four do have dedicated parking. And we were very mindful in our site plan to be good and handsome neighbors where, where there are existing single-family residences along our site, we either put open space and a setback buffer, or we elected to, you put our detached, single-family product in those kind of highly sensitive edges of the site. Next slide, please. Here's some concept architecture. Admittedly, our sketch-up renderings, which are on the right-hand side, are not as beautiful as product that's actually been built. That's just a, an inherent flaw of the imagery. You know, once you landscape something and build it in true texture, it always looks, looks better. So on the right-hand side is our, is our sketch-up design. It is a modern farmhouse design. And you can see some concept imagery on the left-hand side of some examples of that actually built. Next slide, please. Here's the same concept of slide where we have our design imagery in the upper right and lower left-hand corner. And then you have examples of it in real construction in the upper left and lower right. This is the attached townhome product, of course. Next slide, please. This is a rendering looking southwest, excuse me, northwest from the regional trail just north and east of the preschool, looking down, looking down the road. Next slide, please. So without further ado, we're going to dive right into the conditional use approval criteria. Criteria number one is that the proposed plan complies with the land development code. As you can see from these divisions, the 3-1, 3-2, which applies to single-family homes, all the proposed single-family homes are adjacent or across a local street from other single-family subdivisions. And again, much consideration was given to the placement of these two respective residential product types. We wanted to keep the attached product closer to the center and to the areas of the site that didn't immediately abut other single-family, and then put the single-family in the areas that were, you know, highly sensitive either to our Five Parks neighbors to the east or our Whisper Creek neighbors to the north. As it relates to townhomes meeting that criteria, all townhome residents have direct access to either a street, alley, or shared open space, and almost all of them meet all of those criteria, let alone just one each which would comply. Next slide, please. Criteria two is consistency with the comp plan. The comp plan calls for mixed use. As noted earlier, this is mixed use by definition. And then the other criteria, criteria three, is consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning district. As I mentioned, this is mixed-use suburban zoning district pursuant to the new LDC. And this really drives to the heart of mixed use in a suburban setting. It brings a nice increase of intensity as you get close to major thoroughfares and while still providing a complementary neighbor to the existing development. Next slide, please. Criteria number four is, is it comparable with the existing and planned uses in the area? So as far as scale, size, and height is concerned, it is similar to the Park Ridge project immediately to the south across 86th and their duplex townhomes. And it's complement, while at the same time being smaller, it is complementary to the adjacent single-family that has created a very, this, this area of Arvada, as you know, has a very high average home value, and, and there's a lack of starter homes and homes that are, that are more attainable for people who can't get into that kind of 600,000 to 800,000 price point, which is so prevalent in this part of town. So this would be a nice complement to that housing stock. As far as traffic and hours, this site is, is on the hook to, to participate in an escrow forced by the city to fund the potential future signalization of Gladiola. We are not contesting that and willingly participating in that. And this, this community, this development will participate with similar traffic patterns and hours to the adjacent uses. As far as the density is concerned, we are proposing 72 residences. The portion of the, the portion of the, the property that is proposed to be residential is about six acres. So that equates to 72 over six is 12 units to the acre. And that is the minimum allowable density inside of a mixed-use zone. And we think that that's appropriate. We, we don't propose pushing above the minimum density allowable pursuant to the mixed-use residential guidelines. Next slide, please. Approval criteria number five is feasibility of utilities and services. All the utilities required for the development of this site are either in 86th and/or in Indiana. So there's, there are ready access to those. As far as emergency services are concerned, all road design, including the grade and the pitch of such road design, is in compliance with city standards and has been, has been pre-blessed by the fire department. Stormwater management, as you guys know, the, the site right now just sheet drains. Any water that hits that site, surface drains down or to the north through the Whisper Creek, through the swales of the Whisper Creek subdivision and into the regional facility to the northeast. Our proposed project is planning on catching that water, retaining it on site, cleaning it, and then metering it off at a controlled rate via an underground pipe to that, so to that regional facility. So it's going into the same ultimate place that it's going. It's just going in a more controlled and safe fashion. Next slide, please. Approval criteria number six is mitigating any adverse impacts. There's no real adverse impacts. There may be some perceived ones by, you know, people who want to see it remain vacant. But there really are some positive impacts that need to be discussed. First is the stormwater management that I just touched on, to control the water that's just running native right now. The second positive impact is trail connectivity. There are some regional trails. They're shown in this, in this site plan along the east edge in between our proposed development and Five Parks, connecting to the regional walking and horse trails. and Five Parks connecting to the regional walking and horse trails and the improvement of the trail along Indiana as well. We can also, another positive impact is beautifying a current site and putting it into play, a current site that is definitely a challenge to develop. The other positive impacts that I wanted to discuss briefly are one that we will provide an attractive option for a housing demographic that's not currently being served in this part of Arvada. As I mentioned earlier in the previous, in this conversation, that there really, in this area, there aren't any housing options unless you have a significant down payment and a significant income to afford the, the beautiful single family that exists currently. What this, what this allows is for downsizing or right sizing empty nesters to stay in the area and also for, you know, divorced family members or young families who aspire to be a part of this community but can't swing the down payment yet. It allows them to come be a part of the, a part of the community until they can afford purchasing one of the beautiful homes in the area. And last but not least, on the positive impacts is improving Indiana to its ultimate design width along the adjacent portion of Indiana to our site, which includes deceleration and acceleration lanes for our right-in, right-out exit, access point there. So next slide, please. Thank you guys very much for my long-winded presentation and your attention and open to any questions that any of you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. I'll first start by seeing if sir, any member of the public that signed up to provide testimony or position tonight. I will close the public comment portion then of this public hearing, opening up for city council questions or action. Mr. Jones, you're first.
If I could, I'd like to reserve the motion.
You may.
But want to just ask a couple of follow-up questions with regard to some of the feedback that was given at your, at the community meeting with regard to the detention pond. And there were some, there were some concerns about that detention pond and how long water would stay there and mosquitoes. And, and I, and I read, I read the answer, which was, yeah, that's supposed to be drained, I think, within forty-eight hours or something like that. But how do you, how do you ensure that that pond is draining and, and doing what it's, working the way it's supposed to be working?
Sure. Appreciate the question very much. Need to defer to my civil engineer that is way above my head. I know that this, that was something that we immediately checked in our, in our follow-up from, from neighborhood meetings to make sure that this is like, like most detention facilities in Colorado, that it sits dry a majority of the time. But I, I'm going to hand it over to Jeffrey Eckergren, who's our civil engineer, who designed our stormwater management system.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Adam.
First, I need to swear you in. Do you swear affirm the testimony you were giving? These proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Okay, you may proceed. And again, give us your address, business address. State your name and your business address.
My name is Jeffrey Eckergren, E-K-E-G-R-E-N. I reside at eighty-two forty-eight South Pennsylvania Court in Littleton, Colorado, eight zero one two two.
Very good.
Yeah, so the, the detention pond will be constructed with the, per the guidance of the City of Arvada. And it will drain down at the required drawdown time, so there's no standing water. And in the event the detention pond gets over inundated, there's an emergency relief structure that will trigger if that event is met and will convey stormwater through a pipe system rather than overland flow to the regional detention pond.
Okay. And then is there a requirement by the city to, to maintain that retention pond with, so that it doesn't get overgrown with cattails and things like that?
There would be routine operations and maintenance as part of the, as part of this overall development, having a operations and maintenance plan or O and M plan to make sure that the pond is well-maintained and there's not any, you know, any negative impacts from standing water or standing water could be eliminated.
Okay, thank you. And then I just have one last question with regard to the, the intersection and the, the funds committed for a, a traffic signal. Is that, does that, is there a warrant for that traffic signal today? Or are you just committing funds for a future traffic signal? And I don't know, that's probably a, a question for one of our team members.
Yeah, and that's, so this is Jonathan Moore with the planning department. I can hop in and Jenny Wilshaud could also potentially answer the question if she needs to. So far, Village of Five Parks filing four, which is the residential component on the south side of West eighty-sixth Parkway and the newer Park Ridge development, which is to the southeast of this site, have both contributed funds for a, a traffic signal at West eighty-sixth and Gladiola Street. Prestige Preschool has also contributed a small amount. This site will contribute their proportionate contribution. And at the time a signal is warranted, it will be constructed. At, at this point, the city has been monitoring the development of the Park Ridge development. Right now, two of the five potential commercial sites have developed. There's currently an active application under review for a third site. It's anticipated that with the full development of the Park Ridge development and the full development of this site, a traffic signal will be warranted. But the city staff is monitoring the development progression to determine the exact time that it is warranted.
Okay. I appreciate that for the answer. And those are all the questions I have.
Very good. Mr. Pfeiffer, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just really have two questions. One's probably outside of, of your control, but the right-in, right-out. My fear is, because I've learned that all people in Candela's do not understand a right-in, right-out, because they also make that a left turn as well. And then my fear here is somebody's going to turn left on that hill and just die. So hopefully, we watch that and the police will enforce it because it's just, I, I don't know. I don't think, I think it's something that's wrong with that part of the city. So just keep that in mind. The other thing is at the corner, the monument sign to Five Parks, what's going to happen to that monument sign?
Great question, Councilman. So the, the design that you see in front of you, if we could go back a couple slides. But anyway, the design that's in the site plan is, contemplates that monument staying right where it is. The dotted line that you see on a diagonal behind the building is the, the easement for the landscape monument. So the current design would leave the landscape monument as is, unchanged, and build behind it.
Okay, perfect. I was wondering, it's a nice monument sign and it does distinguish that community. So I was hoping you were leaving it. It's a great job. That's the only question.
Hate to pay to replace it.
Yeah, they'll make you move it just down a little bit if they did. And then I'm assuming the maintenance is under them still, the HOA for it as well?
Believe that to be the case.
Okay, but you're not maintaining that, that corner. The current, whoever has it will continue to maintain it.
Yeah, I can hop in and address that again. Yeah, that, the easement is dedicated to, I believe, both the Village of Five Parks, Master HOA Association, and, and the regional metro district. So they, those entities will continue maintaining the, the landscape monument.
Oh, you brought up another question. Is this, is this development going to be part of a metro district or no?
That is, that's not something that has come up in discussions. I, I leave that to Adam if there's any follow-up.
I think that'd be a different hearing if that happened, right?
Yeah.
For what it's worth, we're not planning on establishing a dedicated metro district.
Okay.
But of course, would be subject to any existing.
Perfect. Thank you very much. That's all the questions I have, Mayor.
Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Goldberg, I just have a quick question for you. One of the criteria, approval criteria is comparable with the existing area. And so I wonder if you could give us an idea of the single family home size here in your project versus either the ones directly to the east in Five Parks or directly to the, to the north in Whisper Creek?
Sure. I'll give you the short and sweet answer. And then if you, if you'd like to go any further, I'm sure that our architect could, could dive in. You, you'll notice, you know, this, the site plan is to scale. So these, these single family homes, while, while comparable in, in height, are not comparable in footprint or square footage of the foundation size. And, and that's truly what drives being able to deliver a smaller and more affordable product. If we matched the size and scope and scale, we would get just that, more of the same. So these end up being between just under twelve hundred square feet and then up to in the fifteen hundred square feet range, which is a, a, a nice sweet spot that's desirable for a part of town that the square footages, like the home values, have gotten quite large. If, if you'd like specifics on square footage, I'm happy to have the council swear in Jeff Mansambi to go into further detail.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's necessary. If you say the ones you're building are going to be twelve to fifteen, just any idea, rough idea on average, what the existing homes to both the east and the north are?
Sure.
If you know, if, if you don't know, you can say you don't know.
Sure. So Five Parks, Five Parks is in the high three thousands to low five thousands square feet. And the Whisper Creek to the, to the north is, I think, high two thousands to the mid four thousands. Slightly smaller, but still quite large.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Miller, did you have anything? Mayor Pro Tim Miller.
No, Your Honor, Councilmember Pfeiffer asked the question I was going to ask about the right-in, right-out. So I'm good.
Very good. Mr. Jones, I see no other questions. You may proceed with your proposed action.
Thank you. I move that the conditional use application for the northeast corner of eighty-sixth and Indiana, generally located on northeast corner of eighty-sixth Parkway and Indiana Street, be approved. This motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the planning commission. I'd just like to speak to the motion and, and really thank Mr. Goldberg for the, the amount of work that you've done over the last, really, couple of years to, to, to listen and to come and bring council a sketch plan and say, here's an idea, what do you think? And I think you got some really pretty critical feedback in that council sketch session that, that you took to heart. And I, and I think because of that, you've brought tonight a plan that I think will complement the area. It will be something that can be used on that topography and ultimately create a housing stock that is, is unique and different and hopefully attainable for a, a, a certain segment of population that is looking for that. So I, I just applaud you and your partners for sticking with it and bringing council and the city this project. And so obviously, for those reasons, I will be supporting this application.
Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to make a comment, too. I will also be voting yes on this proposal or this conditional use permit for the reasons Mr. Jones stated. And also for, to say thank you for incorporating commercial in this conditional use. You know, I think this is a great example of how this can be done and done really well and, and how you've made it fit the site really well. So again, I want to give you compliments for doing it, compliments for listening as you've gone through this process and wish you well in your, in your project.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
And Mr. Goldberg, I appreciate it as well for the same comments as Mr. Jones and Mr. Marriott. But I'd like to add that, you know, how times have changed since we last spoke to where we are today. We didn't have this thing called the COVID pandemic. And I think your gamble on, you know, putting a little commercial on the corner is actually going to benefit you in the long run, and here's why. The daytime population does not exist in, in employment centers today, and I don't think it will moving forward. And by you inserting a small but yet large commercial in a residential area, I think will benefit those boutiques, the small shops, the dentist, the, the doctor's office, or whatever shows up in there one day. Because this day and age, people are walking and wanting to patronize local businesses that are within their community. And a clear example of that, and I think I expressed this when you and I spoke last, is like Five Parks. You have a little tiny downtown there, and the loyalty by the surrounding community is unwavering. And so I appreciate you adjusting and taking a little chance. And maybe the good thing out of everything was we had this little pandemic that is going to make your commercial area maybe just a little bit better. And, and allowing folks in the area to have an opportunity to maybe open something up, because there's a lot of folks that are interested in, in, in doing that. So that's the only thing I wanted to stress. And again, I appreciate all your adjustments and what you're doing for this part of the, the city. So good job. Thank you, Mr. Goldberg, and I'll be supporting your request.
Very good. I'm not going to repeat what's already been said. Mr. Goldberg, I am truly appreciative of the fact that after you did the site plan review with city council, you didn't just put your tail between your legs and take your marbles and go home and go take on some other projects somewhere else. You certainly stuck to it. You listened to the neighborhood. You listened to the input we were giving you, and you brought back a project that is, I think, far superior to what was brought around the first time because of the commercial development and the recognition that that corner is a very viable commercial corner that, that does benefit the local residents. I think it's going to benefit your project long-term and is going to be a, a true asset. So thank you for letting us be a little tough on you the first go-round and that what we're seeing here tonight, I think, is a, a superior product. And it took some time, but your effort is greatly appreciated. Ms. Miller, do you have any comments? Or if not, would you please cast your vote?
I do. I just want to say, Mr. Goldberg, I love this project. I think it's fantastic. You had a challenge of a site to work with, and you, you rose to that challenge. So great job, and I will be supporting the motion.
Very good. With that, I will display the remaining votes. This project is approved unanimously. Ms. Miller announcing her vote previously and the rest of us voting affirmatively. Congratulations, Mr. Goldberg. We look forward to seeing this project come to fruition.
Thank you so much, Mayor and council, for your time and your consideration. And very happy to be a part of Arvada. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our sole public hearing. Is there anybody that signed up for public comment during this segment? There is not. With that, I'll turn it over for city council members who have any individual reports that they would like to make. Ms. Ford.
Well, I just want to continue to remind everybody about the online fine art market that's coming to the Arvada Center Galleries on November thirtieth through December eighteenth. And there are many, many small businesses that will be a part of this show. And I got a sneak preview of it on Friday, and there's lots of great things. So I know the Arvada Center will, will welcome your patronage. So thank you.
Very good. We also need a motion to cancel the November twenty-third, twenty-twenty meeting. Mr. Pfeiffer?
I'd like to make the motion to go ahead and counsel next week's workshop.
Ms. Miller, how do you wish to vote on that motion?
I wish to vote yes.
Thank you. Displaying the remaining votes, that is now unanimous with the rest of council, joining Ms. Miller in affirmatively supporting Mr. Pfeiffer's. joining Ms. Miller in affirmatively supporting Mr. Pfeiffer's motion. With that, let's move on to reports from the city manager.
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor and council.
Well, that's a rare event. Maybe the city attorney has a lengthy report.
Nothing from me, Your Honor.
Yes.
Your Honor, I do have something.
Okay, Ms. Miller.
I couldn't push my button, but I do have something.
Okay, go ahead.
So I just want to remind everybody, please wear your mask. And when you're out in the community, as numbers continue to rise, it's not just the numbers that we're looking at. It's the businesses that want to stay open through this holiday season and the little ones that want to go to school as much as they can or daycare as much as they can and, and be in the pods as they can. I'm remote tonight because I have a cold. And if you've got a cold, you stay home. And as much as I give Mr. Devon and, and the city team a hard time about having to be remote just because I have a common cold, I'm taking extra precautions because it's what we need to do during this season. So I know that everybody has COVID fatigue, but please stay strong. We at this. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and we certainly agree. I want to close tonight with offering condolences to Kristen, Kristen, Kristen Rush for her recent loss, or thoughts and prayers are with you and your family. With that, we stand adjourned.